Okay, let's go ahead and call the meeting to order at eight o'clock even. Anybody here for public comment? No?
Uh, there are not.
Okay, alright, so our first agenda item is approval of the October, October thirtieth minute, which I sent out with the agenda. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from last time.
Second. Come on, Ben, I need you. Alright, any corrections or, you know, additions or discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Everybody, okay. Okay, commissioners, we still need one. Tried to talk Matt into it, I don't, he hasn't answered me.
They sent the paperwork into the city, so I have no idea where it is.
Awesome. Okay, great, I will follow up. What'll happen is you'll need to go into town hall and get sworn in. Um, but let me check with Alicia and find out where that is. Awesome. Okay, great.
Well, I guess Kate, my, my term was up, which I didn't realize, uh, but I did say I'll stay on.
Okay, so you probably.
It has to go before the town council for approval before I can get sworn in again.
Alright, okay, um, let me just put this.
It'll be in January.
Okay, so I'll loop back with the first selectman's office and make sure we get both of you on the next town council meeting agenda. Then we'll be at full strength. This is awesome. Yay. Okay, uh, station policies. I know I didn't do anything. Hi Jeff.
Hello.
What happened to you?
Budget season, what can I say? No, I was, I was carrying boxes up. And being the lazy person that I am, I tried to carry too many because I didn't want to go up and down the stairs and the box slid and hit the corner of my eye.
My gosh, well, I know what, I mean, I, I hit myself right up here, uh, recently and how purple it got was astonishing.
Yeah, no, it ballooned out, so I knew what the, uh, I knew what I was gonna hear on Monday when I came in.
Well, I hope you feel okay.
Thank you, I do.
Alright, so station policies were still, maybe we can try to find some time before the next meeting. Okay, then the other thing I sent out was the twenty twenty-six, um, meeting calendar. So with the, what's that?
The only thing I noticed is that April sixteenth is during, um, the high school vacations, uh, break.
Okay, so do we want to amend that?
I'm not going anywhere. I don't know, Amanda, I don't know if you're planning to be in Dayton or, um, you're on mute.
I don't, yeah, I haven't made that decision yet, so.
I just figured this.
Kate, I didn't, I didn't see those dates, uh, come through.
Alright, let me, uh, let me pull them up and we can look at them right now.
It was in the same.
Oh, it was with the agenda?
It's at the very bottom.
I can, I can share it real quick if that helps.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, let's, where's my sharing button? Alright, can you see this? Uh, what happened? Where'd it go? Okay, here it is. So it's essentially every six weeks. We have certainly made adjustments, you know, on the fly before, so. If we want to change the April sixteenth right now, we can or we can wait to see if people have conflicts.
I, I think it's okay and I, uh, for me personally, we'll make it work, so.
Okay, alright, so then if everybody else is okay, then let's, uh, go ahead and somebody make the motion and.
Make a motion.
That's Vince, thank you.
Second.
Thanks Amanda. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Alright, thank you. Okay, moving on to, um, budget, uh, the twenty-five, twenty-six budget, we're right on track, we're in great shape, so, um, Compton will be fine for the rest of the year, but having said that, the twenty-six, twenty-seven fiscal year budget process starts now. So I sent out a draft budget for the fiscal year that Laura and I have, have worked on, um. Usually our hearing is sometime late January, so we have a meeting on the twenty-second. I don't know how that's gonna line up with when I have to meet with Vicky, so that's why I wanted to get it in front of you at this meeting. If we have question marks and we don't want to approve it today, we can call a quick interim meeting or wait till the twenty-second. Um, so do you all have it or you want me to pull it up? I actually have it here. Pull it up. Uh, let me just. Okay, can you see it? Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Alright, so this is what we, you know, this is this current fiscal year, um, which ends in June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six. This is what I'm, what Laura and I talked about presenting for our budget request. A little bit of an explanation, I think probably that the capital stuff we need to talk about for a minute. Um, so this is finishing up the, um, sort of the longer term plan that we had to align ourselves with the V-Mix server, et cetera, with what's in the Board of Ed, um, you know, uh, Lorraine Smith Room and what's in the council chambers. And then we want to, uh, be able to support multi-camera events, so we need some streaming equipment. We need to replace Laura's computer, which we actually may try to squeeze into this year's budget, but I wanted to put a line in next year's in case I can't quite squeeze it in. Um, and then we were talking about, um, some additional, replacing some studio lighting, which Laura was gonna double check on. So any, uh, any, Laura, anything I missed here on the capital? Projects?
The only other thing may be that, um, the sound mixer that I had mentioned prior to the meeting, um.
We talk about that for a second, like, how much are we talking about?
It's about four hundred dollars, let me get an exact.
I think, I think I can squeeze that in this year, I, I want to fix that now, right?
Okay, we would, I mean, it would be nice to have it. We have a backup, but it's, you know.
So it's the sound mixer, what, what is the piece called?
Um, it's, it's an analog sound mixer.
Okay, so, um, so I would prefer to just get that now, and I don't think we can capitalize that anyway, right Phil? So any, does anybody have any questions about these items on the capital list or anything up on the, um, from the budget items?
No, no.
The one thing we did, we did budget some more money for, um, doing some more apparel branding and I don't know, Amanda, if you wanted any money for marketing, if we needed to bump that at all for anything you want to do that would cost us something beyond our social media stuff.
Um, not right now, because I don't really want to get into from, you know, paying for promotion through Facebook or Meta or anything. I'd like to try to build it, um, by ourselves and then go from there.
I, I agree, so. Laura, are you good with this five hundred? Is that enough for some additional apparel?
Um, I have not yet sent out a quote, actually, while Matt is on the call, I would just like to ask him as a videographer, like, in addition to the polos and the hats that we have, like, what would be something that you and the videographers would wear, you know, just would you prefer a pullover hoodie, I mean, a pullover sweatshirt, would you prefer a long sleeve cotton tee, like, what would be worth looking into?
Um, wet weather gear, like a, like a simple wet weather over.
Okay.
It doesn't have to be like, it just, it's just a weather. Something that could have the, the name on the back. It's, you know, cause.
Kind of cool to have it on the back, right, like?
Yeah.
The networks do. Cause we're so big.
As wherever you got those warm weather hats, those are great, that's the best warm weather hat I've ever had.
Yeah, they're great.
Is it a be, like a beanie?
Yeah, it's great, it's brilliant. The, the shirts I have are fine, the hat's fine, um, just something for white weather.
Okay, great.
Okay, good.
Yeah, I would rather get something that you guys will, you know, that's useful than just, cool.
Okay, so any other comments or questions? So then what I'd ask for is a, is approval for this budget with any adjustments we need to make to, to this, uh, to this number based on what Laura finds out, we might need a little more than this. So can somebody make a motion?
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve as submitted, um, except for any adjustment that Laura has. Sounds good, I'll second that.
Okay, great. Okay, any other discussion? Alright, all those in favor? Thank you. The other stuff we wanted to talk about was, uh, closed captioning, Laura?
Yes.
Not because this year we don't need it, it's next year we're gonna really need to.
Right.
Harder, right, so you want to comment on that?
Um, what I've been doing is I've sort of been using December as like a, a beta test. So through Premier Pro, I've been using their AI to create transcripts. Um, and so what has happened is that for the government meetings, normally we have that lower third, that title that comes up. I've moved that to the top of the screen so that the closed captioning doesn't get in the way, I can, um, I mean, I can pull up a screen, actually, I don't know if I can, can I pull up a screen, is there anything that's up to date? Um, I don't see anything up to date right now, but I can send you guys a screenshot of what it looks like. Um, the only thing I just need to do a little bit of troubleshooting because I actually, um, came across, for some reason, the Board of Ed meeting didn't transcribe well, I don't know why, so, um, I just have to look into, you know, troubleshooting basically when things go sideways.
So will that meet the requirement that?
We, I believe so, I just have to, I have to verify that.
Uh, Laura, how do you, as a, as a viewer, how do you turn on and off the type, uh, subtitles?
You don't turn them off, they're on automatically?
On the station.
Yes, and that's part of the requirement, they have to be, um, provided, is my understanding.
Even, so there's, there's no way of not seeing them?
No.
On the station? Okay. But how about anything web-based, are you using the, the players? Um, subtitle, uh, capabilities or how would that work? Would you, would you hard code the titles on there too?
Um, what do you mean, they're being hardcoded into the meeting itself, into the video file? So however you play it, those, those titles will be there. Is that what you're asking? I'm not.
Yeah, I'm, I think we, we discussed it last time that, um, I mean, you can go on to the bottom of the Zoom player and you can say, say show captions and it'll do translation for you, it'll do subtitles for you.
Oh, right, right, and a lot of those meetings, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, but a lot of those, um, virtual meetings, the captions are turned on, so in that case, I'm not, you know, double writing, I'm just using those captions from Zoom.
Right, okay, but, uh, they're still embedded in the video.
Yes, correct.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Yeah.
So what about, you know, anything on YouTube or streaming on Facebook, what? They're embedded?
If, um, if on, if the virtual meetings on Zoom, um, have the captions embedded, then they stream to YouTube, then they're going to be automatically embedded in those videos. Um, and that's just, I've been doing that just for government meetings for now. Um, I just need to verify whether we need to do that for everything. As of now, anything on YouTube, you can toggle captions on or off?
Not if they're hardcoded into the video, though.
Correct, correct.
So.
But that's for non-government stuff, you can, that we're posting on YouTube, you can toggle it on or off.
So I'm, I'm currently watching on my other browser, this meeting, and it is live.
Transcribing.
Coding, transcribing.
Yep.
Uh, the, um, the captions.
I can see it right now.
Any, any other livestreamed video on YouTube also has the close caption button where you can toggle it on and off, so on the web, we're fine. Laura manages everything on the channel, which is a single video, has to hard code that in the video because our server system doesn't have the ability to close caption on the fly. So that's why Laura's got to process that and make it part of the video.
So, I suggest that we ma- make two, two versions of, of the video, one for social media and one for Charter or Frontier, whoever, because, and I mean, it's, it's not, it's not a big deal, once you have the captions, it's easy enough to render with them or without them. So anything we upload to YouTube or Facebook shouldn't have hardcoded captions. And that's my proposal or suggestion.
Why not?
Because you can't turn them off. Everything you watch will have titles on it, because that's.
How much more work is that gonna be, Laura, to render two versions of everything?
It depends, well, first of all, just rendering the.
Yeah.
Yeah, it depends on how long it takes and it's hard to, like, with the computer I have now, sometimes it can take, you know, twenty, thirty minutes to render a two-hour meeting, so it's really gonna. I mean, it's gonna add to the, you know, it's gonna add time to my, you know, it's not a five-minute export, you know, sometimes it's twenty, thirty minutes and then it's, um.
But that runs unattended, you don't have, you, you could just run it in the background, you don't need to.
Yeah, but to be fair, I mean, the computer, again, it's hard to say, like, once I have a new computer, but the computer that I have now, um, it definitely impacts my ability, because if I'm rendering in the background, like, for instance, yesterday, I was rendering a meeting, I was downloading some files and I was trying to edit another meeting, and I had to stop editing the meeting because, um, while I, I was trying to sync, it was, it was off of an SD card and for some reason, the way the codec is, the audio is not synced to the video. And I couldn't play it back in real time to get that sync, so I had to stop and do something else, it affects my ability to multitask.
Okay, I get that, but I, I still think we should try to. It, I don't think it's ideal that anything we publish on social media has subtitles on it.
Well, we don't. I'm sorry, just gonna say, we don't push to Facebook.
Okay, so let's say YouTube, anything we, we publish to YouTube has subtitles on it and the user, the viewer can't turn them off.
We're not. Laura doesn't take, that's right, Laura, you don't take your post-process video and then further upload it to YouTube, all the meetings that we have on YouTube are livestreamed.
Correct.
Automatic. The only videos that you're publishing with the subtitles are to our server.
And if I do post something to YouTube, it is based on request. If somebody, like, somebody, maybe somebody on town council may ask for a specific meeting from, you know, a past meeting because they didn't see it, but anything else that we running is available on video on demand.
Okay, which will have, uh, burned in subtitles.
Yes, I do need, I need to verify, because my understand, again, I just need to verify the requirements for captioning, my understanding is that the new, um, requirements is that it's an ADA requirement, there's also a mention of audio descriptions, but I need to look into that as well.
Okay.
So when does this take effect?
Um, I, depending on the size of the town, I think we are required in April of twenty-seven. Um, I think larger towns, it's April twenty-sixth, but I think, you know, like I said, if we can, if we can get this up and available for the twenty-twenty-six date, I think we're better off.
Alright, so, but the point is we have some flexibility to continue to sort through, like, what's the best way to do this and
Right.
what's the most efficient way to accomplish the goal?
Right.
Right? Okay, so, um, I think we probably need to, Laura, look at, once we get the computers problem solved,
Mm-hmm.
what the, you know, can you multitask the way you want to so that we could? So.
But we can discuss computer requirements that can help you speed up this process, because the computer number seemed a little low in the budget for what you need.
Okay, I actually got a quote from, um, Jeff Van Steenberg, what I did was I went to Adobe's. Um, I found their requirements, um, for what they, and it's not just their minimum, it's their, you know, whatever, their ideal requirements, um, and Jeff Van Steenberg, um, can help us get a better price on ordering machines.
Okay.
But I'll definitely, I'll send you.
Yeah, like, let's check, because you, if you bump up the graphics card and you bump up your Cuda cores, your, your your rendering time is strict.
Yeah, because my laptop versus the PC, I mean, the PC that's in the studio has been there since I arrived, it's been reimagined and things have been upgraded, but it's still a a ten-plus-year-old machine, so.
That's not.
Did, no, no, not anymore, it should definitely be night and day.
Yeah, I just, you know, what I can do this year is definitely gonna be dollar limited, so.
Yeah.
Right, um.
Well, with the desktop, if we get, like, we can bump up your GPU if, if.
Yeah.
If you need it.
Yeah.
Right, sorry to hard check.
No, that's okay, I'll, like I said, I'll forward that, um, I'll forward that email to you with the specs and then I would, yeah, I definitely appreciate your feedback.
That's why we need you on the commission, thank you.
Yes.
Um, let me just make, uh, just gonna make some notes.
Yeah, I was gonna actually print out, um, you know, compare the, the specs of the computer that Jeff's proposing to what, you know, because I gave him, like I said, I gave him that list. So I just want to see where.
Alright, so Laura, you'll work with Matt and Jeff to figure out what we need and then I'll figure out if we can squeeze it in this year. Okay, awesome, alright. Good, this is exactly what I was hoping in terms of this conversation about closed captioning, that we get in front of it, you know, and with enough time to look at all the, the issues, um, Jens, because I didn't, I wasn't thinking about what you raised, so. Okay, anything else on that? Um, so we all, we, we listed a couple of other things on the, uh, the capital project plans. Closed cabinet, captioning was one, additional studio equipment and cameras. Um, Laura, anything you want to say about those or Matt you want to offer?
I know that, whatever the, the equipment list that I saw, that's what we're talking about, right?
Yeah.
Um, looked fine to me, I thought it was well thought out and will sync in with everything else. I have no reason to set the apple cart on that one.
Okay, good, Laura, anything else you're thinking about wanting for this fiscal year?
Um, nothing that I can think of as far as the studio, I mean, the cameras are relatively new and they're working well, um. You know, I gave you, I actually, I gave Matt the, um, the proposal for the remote studio equipment and he had great feedback. Um, I can't think of anything right now.
So what we're trying to do is think a little further ahead, right, so we're gonna be looking at, um, with the more students in the studio and using the equipment, you know, do we need to anticipate maybe needing cameras in next fiscal year, not this one we're talking about, but next one? Um, to try to do at least a two-year forward on capital, so that's why this is on the agenda for today, we want to. Because we really, we haven't had a full year of the students' engagement, so, you know, we really got to see what that ends up meeting, meaning, and, uh, as far as the, the impact on what we do have. Okay, so anything else on that?
Uh, as far as the studio, if you're forward-looking, the studio, the cameras are fine, but the studio needs this actual studio stuff, like lights and C-stands and things like that. Um.
So that's what you should work with Laura on developing that list.
That's, you know, going out in the future.
Yeah, and I'll connect you also with, um, Jeff Cochran, because he's the tech ed teacher who's teaching, um, digital media one and two. And he's got the Soaring Eagle Studios kids in the studio, um, so.
If you, Matt, if you can work with Laura on what that list would look like, again, I, trying to give ourselves and, you know, all the people that have to vote on this stuff, a forward look that we're not just thinking about this year, that we're trying to anticipate what we're gonna need down the line.
Yeah.
And enhancing the studio experience would certainly fall under that, now that I think the Soaring Eagles studio kids are gonna be, um, you know, spending a lot more time in there and trying to do more, more, creating more content there, so. I'm sorry, I'm. Okay, so. Laura left, oh, there she is, okay.
My pen died.
Your pen died, okay. Alright, next thing is programming, what do you got, Laura?
Programming, um, well, we are in concert season and, um, of sports starts on Friday. Uh, great. The great news is that I've got a, everybody is signed up, I don't have, um, don't have a blank spot, which is nice. Um, everybody's doing a great job, all the videographers are doing great and I appreciate that, um. We are going to, um, through, through a mistake of mine, we're actually gonna try something new. Um, we're gonna be livestreaming a lot of the, um, the basketball games and Matt and Memphis are going to be, um, kind of tag teaming on producing those, so.
Girls and boys or just?
Both, both, yeah, I think all the games that I have scheduled, um, somebody has, uh, signed up to produce, which will be fun, um.
I just wanted to give us something to promote, Amanda, that people.
Yeah.
Definitely love that. And. Did you want to schedule Laura of, uh, which games we're gonna be streaming, because I definitely know some people that would want to be able to tune in.
Yeah, I can get that, um.
Yeah, if you could send that to me, Laura, because, uh, then I can kind of pre-fill the social media calendar with it.
Yeah, I'll share that spreadsheet with you.
Okay, great, thank you.
Sure. And then just a quick recap of, um, election night, it was, uh, because we haven't met since before then, um. It was definitely a unique election night, um, through no fault of the students, they did a great job. Um, they had a ton of, they had a ton of content, but by about eight forty-five, eight fifty, their content was exhausted. Um, there were some issues with tabulation and, um, they had to go to town hall, I don't remember what it was, something with the machines. Um, but they did a great job and we, it was the first time that we had to go off air without results, but you know, they rolled with it, they did, they, they were fantastic.
My question is, um, we didn't have the early voting results.
No, that, yeah.
And I don't know how that's gonna be corrected in the future, because. I don't know if there's a, pardon me, Kate?
They don't start, they can't start counting until election day, is the problem.
I did mention that, actually, Vince, I did mention that to Vicky and she, um, you know, this is just speculation, but she is thinking that as time moves forward and, you know, early voting becomes the norm, um, that we'll be able to get those results closer to close of the polls. I don't know all the specifics, Kate, if they can start day of, you know.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I, I work the polls, so, I mean, these, uh, the state regulations around this are relatively new, so for the municipalities to figure out how to like, apply them has been, you know, I mean, it's just a evolving thing, so I think we learned some things this year. Um, you know, I think there definitely, with the volume of early voting, there's, there's definitely pressure to, you know,
Yeah.
be able to provide those results sooner, so I think the registrar's office is looking at that, um, and I expect, well, they'll be trying to make some improvements so that, you know, you're not waiting for final results as long.
Yeah, with, with the amount of, absolutely, voting we had, they definitely did tilt the results one way or the other, uh, in several races, so it'd be good to have them.
So this was just the second, you know, the second election that we had early voted, so, you know, you gotta learn and I don't think people expected it to actually pick up momentum from the last time. So again, learning curve that up. That was interesting and again, I, I definitely heard in the registrar's office, okay, you know, we gotta keep trying to figure this out to make it faster for next time.
Yeah.
I think, I mean, in, in summary, we, we were the first with the results, but they weren't the right ones, or the correct ones, so.
Right.
Um, yeah, something needs to be thought through on that front, how we can.
I mean, to be fair, we do, you know, and I make it a point to remind the kids that these are based on. I mean, to be fair, we do, you know, and I make it a point to remind the kids that these are based on in-person voting. So it's not that the results weren't correct, they were just correct based on the information that they had.
They weren't complete.
Yeah, I wasn't saying they were in, well.
Right.
Yeah, in, incomplete is a better.
Yes, correct. They're incomplete. So, but I think, I think as time, you know, as Kate says, I think as time moves on, the process will evolve and hopefully we'll get to a point where those results will be ready by the time we.
It's not, nobody was happy with how long this took, nobody. So I think there is definitely. And then not just in our town, in other towns too. Um, so I think everybody's trying to figure out, okay, how do we, how do we do this better? Because we're not, we're at the point now where we're not used to waiting this long and
Right.
We, you know, kind of theoretically, you shouldn't have to because the actual tabulation of the, of the early votes, I mean, we have a faster technology this time around, but there was still the volume, you know, the, not to get into a big explanation, but, um, hopefully it'll get better.
I think the real numbers or the correct, complete numbers were not available until nine thirty, the earliest, maybe even later.
I think it was later than that.
Sounds about right.
Yeah. So we also should talk about, you know, maybe understanding ahead of time, you know, again, knowing that this is not sorted out for the next election. Engaging with the registrar's office earlier to say, okay, what are you doing so that we can time our show better? Maybe we have to start the show later or whatever, right? How do we make our program as you know, informative as possible? So.
I think the content that was provided by the student was, was excellent. But, I mean, you can only do that for so long.
Yeah.
And, and then you'll have to repeat yourself and and, you know, a lot of people by the time it's nine o'clock. I would assume that a lot of people have, have switched to the national feed of whatever their favorite station is. So, I don't know. It would still be, it would still be nice to be able to be the first to publish the complete results. And, you know, we could still do that and just say, well, we'll go live as soon as we have the results or something like that.
My concern is, no, and I agree, I would love to do that. I just, my concern is just you know, having the students sit around and wait for that because they have to go to school the next day.
Well, I think that's where talking to the registrar's office about what the process is going to be the next time around and when we based on that, when do we think we're gonna, results are actually going to come in for everything? Then we can set the timing of the programming better and the kids' expectations and make the decisions about you know, whether it's too late for them or, you know, what, what else can we do to still have, still break the news? But have it be, you know, work for everybody.
Right.
That makes sense.
When I was their age, I could get by with three hours of sleep and I'll be, uh, perfectly okay the next morning. But maybe it's changed since I was a kid.
Alright, so notes, that's a note for next time, right?
Yes.
I, I have one suggestion. If, if we wanted to make ourselves well, never mind. My suggestion is that we get people to sign up electronically to be notified once we have the final results. Because that'll give us, for Amanda, it'll give us a lot of emails and it'll give us a lot of potential subscribers and we won't keep them hanging. We'll, we'll send them a message, text or email or whatever. Once we have the complete results and then we'll go live, I don't know, five minutes later. Send them the, the text with the link to the station coverage and they click it and then five minutes later, we'll publish the numbers. So.
Have Amanda, Amanda a way to do that?
Um, I'd have to turn to Bill for that to see. And he's shaking his head now.
You're on mute.
I mean, we we could, we could use the, the town websites, um, notify me. Module, which would send an email.
Okay.
Um, that would just need to either be available for subscription or we can publish email addresses to that list. So, yeah.
Okay.
So are you saying, Jens, are you saying that we would collect email addresses to notify people?
Either that or phone numbers. I mean, I've worked on a couple of projects like, uh, benefits where you can text, um, you can text your contribution to a, a phone number. And you, you got that phone number from, from a provider that provides this kind of service. So two or three dot, whatever, you text to that and you say, sign me up. And then you get a message back saying you're signed up. And then once the admin pulls the trigger emails, uh, text messages will go out to people and, and they'll be notified. And some of it is free because they scrape the numbers also, of course. Um, some of the services you have to pay for, but if it's once in a blue moon, we have to do that. Maybe we should consider using a, a third party.
But what are we, I'm just trying to understand the whole process. So we alert, we collect the emails or the text cell phone numbers and we notify them.
When we have the results and we're ready.
When we have the results.
That we're gonna go live.
Yeah. We're going live in one minute.
Oh, okay. Okay.
So do we, do we do an election show next year?
No.
No.
So maybe, maybe a, a way to test this would be using it to alert people on the St. Joe's Trumbull High Thanksgiving game.
That would be, yeah, anything interesting, you know.
Do we do that one? Because it's, okay.
We cover it.
Yeah, but I, here's the thing though, um, my concern with that is that the cell signal at St. Joe's is abysmal. And.
Well, it's, I mean, I think we can talk about, you know.
I think we have to pick.
Yeah, I think we want to test it before the next election cycle when we would be creating a show.
Right, right. I think graduation would probably be a better.
Graduation, that's a great idea, um, where we could test the protocol we would use, not necessarily that it's going to get us the people, you know, on the list that we want.
Yeah, Jens, um, yeah.
Go ahead, Amanda.
I was just gonna ask Bill, it's, it's only emails that you have through that alert system, correct?
Correct. Yeah, I mean, the, there is an SMS component, but we, um, don't have subscription to that.
Yeah.
I thought we got texts from the town, no? Maybe not.
You can get a text from the town through the Trumbull Citizen Alert system.
But that's different.
That's different.
Yeah, yeah. And I don't think this would qualify.
No. No.
It's not an emergency.
These, these, um, services aren't that expensive, especially when you look at the the relatively modest number of, of people that would be using it. I mean, we're not talking about a nationwide campaign or anything like that. It's for maybe ten, ten thousand, even less citizens.
I think SMS is what we would want. I mean, I don't know that people are going to be looking at their emails. So.
Yeah.
Again, good that we're talking about this now so we can try to figure out the technical challenges. Because it, you know, in theory, as I'm thinking about it, like, it would be cool to be able to say, okay, the girls' basketball game against, you know, Ludlow will start in ten minutes.
Right.
And the link.
And the link, yeah.
Right.
That'd be super cool.
Alright, I can look into that. Jens, if you know of any services that you've used for other campaigns, like, uh, brand names, can you just e, uh, email or text them to me?
Yeah, well, I'll text them just to prove the point.
Thank you.
Awesome. Alright, what else you got for, uh, programming, Laura?
Um, that's pretty much it. We're, you know, just chugging along. Trying out, I'm, uh, trying out closed captioning. You know, we've got the, uh, concerts, 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 concerts.
Fun time of the year.
Oh, yes. Busy, busy. And then, like I said, the, uh, sports, uh, boys and girls' basketball is coming up. And then, um, we are going to livestream, I'm going to be working with, uh, Jeff Alterman again. And, uh, Garrett will be recording the St. Joe's Trumbull High Basketball Games from Sacred Heart in February, I think.
Yeah, that's the, yeah, that's always a fun event.
That's fun.
Okay, on to technical. So the Cablecast server and automation project.
Yeah, I need to follow up with Donnie for the timeline. Because I know stuff was ordered. I just don't have a calendar. And I'm sure this time of year is just crazy for everybody, so.
Okay, so installation timeline still to be determined.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, we talked about closed captioning. I mean, anything else on the, what, you said the soundboard. I wanted to make sure that soundboard is shot.
Yes, it is.
Okay. Alright, so you're going to get me that and we'll.
Yes.
Okay, anything else on the technical front?
Nothing I can think of off the top of my head.
Okay, so Laura, when I send these, these minutes out, you're going to really need to look closely at.
Okay. Okay.
Got all this stuff right because.
Sure.
Alright, good. Okay, marketing and PR, Amanda, how's it going?
It's going. Um, I'm just trying to figure out the best way to handle the live versus the, um, you know, the stuff that we're putting up on our own server. I had a thought, which unfortunately happened after we reviewed the budget. But similarly to the student videographers, I'm wondering about student social media.
That's a great idea.
Because to be honest with you, the band really kind of lets the students and a lot of the athletic pages too. There's one that's like, uh, you know, Trumbull Athletics runs the main one and then they share what the kids do. But these kids come up with some really creative stuff and not, you know, uh, not anything that we'd have to necessarily worry about. And it'd be a great way to kind of set parameters for them because of who the audience is and who we're trying to attract. But, um, you know, and it doesn't have to be a lot of time either. I, most of them can kind of do it in their sleep at this point.
So Laura, is there a way to connect, um, Amanda with the marketing teacher kind of thing?
Oh, yeah.
Because we can pay them like we pay the videographers.
Yeah, and that's what I was thinking, again, unfortunately, after we approved the budget.
Yeah, but we, we left some, you know.
Wiggle room, okay.
Yeah, wiggle room, yep.
Okay, I'll send an email.
Okay.
Amanda, I'll send an email to you and I'll copy Christina Rosati and just give her a little blurb about what you're trying to do.
Okay.
And then I'll kind of leave you to.
Perfect, yeah. I, and I don't mind overseeing it. I just think that it would help with the consistency and then give, and give more students a chance to, you know, see what this process is like.
Love that idea.
I think it's great.
Awesome.
Cool. Okay, that's great.
Um, I still need to get, uh, hooked up with the Historical Society, I, uh, to get the cards over to them. Um, what else?
Uh, Jennifer Winchell might be a good contact. She, um, she's on Town Council. She's also the orchestra teacher at Hellcrest.
Oh, yes, okay.
She's, yeah.
Alright, um, I'll reach out to her.
Okay.
Um, and I wanted to check in with the senior center just to see if they have been giving out cards. If there's, you know, been any reaction to it.
They need more.
Yeah, exactly. That's what I'm hoping.
I've got them, I've got them in all the camera bags. Um, I've given out a couple.
Okay, good. Excellent. I think that's it for me.
Awesome. I think that's a great idea. It, um, makes total sense.
Yes.
Okay, Laura, THS connection.
THS connection. Well, um, as I said right now, and as you guys have seen, Soaring Eagles Studios is up and running. They are producing, um, episodes. They are coming out every other Friday. So, um, last Friday was one, next Friday will be their last episode of twenty twenty-five. And this is something that, um, Jeff Cochrane is their advisor. So he's been, um, he's been doing a great job with the kids. So they're, you know, he, he started doing everything. So like, he kind of scaffolded them and now he's sort of pulling away all the beams, you know, helping, letting them write the scripts. They're running the camera. Um, he's been doing the editing, but the goal is to shift it into basically editing it live on the board so that all he needs to do is just tweak stuff. And, um, that's pretty much where they're at right now, which is great. They've had some, um, the kids have done some like recorded pieces that they've edited themselves that they've put in. Um, it's, it's going really well. I don't know how it's been received in the school. I, you know, because I'm not in the building with the kids, but it looks great. The kids are really enjoying it. They're having a great time. Um.
Are they generating any content that we can use on the station?
Not yet, but I know, like, Jeff has tons of ideas and I think as time goes on, we'll be able to, because one of the things he mentioned, um, wanting to do is a forty-eight hour film festival. And I said, I will put them on the air. I will run them. So we are moving towards that point. You know, he's developing courses, like he would like to do more like sports journalism, um, longer form pieces, like as coursework. So, again, this is, I don't know where that is, you know, I don't know where he is in that process and you know how you know, getting new coursework in, um, can be. Um, but that's definitely something that he's looking at. I sent him a document, I don't know if you remember about five years ago, I went through all the different high schools in the state trying to find course descriptions of video production. Excuse me, video production courses. I sent that to him just to give him an idea of what exists. And he's starting to kind of look around as well. So hopefully as the coursework expands, there'll be more things he can share. Because these, um, the you know, these news, these announcements are more time sensitive, so I don't know that it's really something we would want to put on air yet.
Yep. Very cool. Very cool.
Um, I just want to, uh, make a quick comment here. The, um, the Bridgeport Film Festival that I'm involved with, uh, have been over the last three years, have a student segment. Where, um, yeah, basically students get to show their work. And most of them are college grade. But, um, some of them are high schoolers and it's not a competition as such, but it gives you the opportunity to get your name and your work out in front of the, it's not the, just the local community. Lots of people from New York come up. It's a three-day festival at the Klein in Bridgeport. And I don't know if it's, it's way off, but maybe something to consider.
Jens, can you send me an email with some information and I will, um, I'll forward it to Jeff Cochrane and I'll copy you on it just so he can share that with, because even if the kids want to go see what kind of stuff these kids create, that would be, I think.
That's a, that's a good idea too. I will.
Thank you.
Okay, awesome. This is, I mean, I'm so excited about how much engagement we're getting from the high school. And this has been a very long goal for the station and to see the, you know, the level of engagement is just incredible. So.
Lara, I had a quick question. Wh- where do they show it in the school, the announcements? Is it in the cafeteria?
I believe it goes on the monitors in the cafeteria. They have a YouTube channel.
Yeah.
So, uh, that you can subscribe to, to see it. So that's my understanding.
Okay, so they're all showing it in the classrooms?
I'm not sure. Again, the goal is to make it a first period class so they can eventually go live.
Right.
And show it live, but right now they're just, again, just to kind of.
Get it started. Yeah, yeah. I was just wondering how the other students were actually seeing it, you know.
Yeah, who can see it?
Yeah.
Can you find, can you get more clarity on that so we could kind of see if we can dip into some people that have seen it and get some reactions?
Absolutely.
Okay, cool. Alright, anything else? Uh, I don't have anything on the miscellaneous agenda. Anybody have anything else they want to talk about?
Um, the only other thing, I just wanted to thank Jeff for, um, your help with the swearing in ceremony. The livestream was so much better. Um, I, moving forward, I think maybe this needs, I don't know if this needs to be part of the policies, not to sort of jump all the way back to the beginning, but, um, we've had requests to livestream some events. And again, at the first selectmen debate, we learned how, um, not good the cell service was when we tried to livestream. So, um, again, I think some of the process from now on is going to be just when I'm asked to livestream something that the person requesting needs to make sure that we are able to get a hardwired connection to the internet.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. I, I prefer we over communicate just to make sure everything's covered if, you know.
Yeah, and that was super helpful, Jeff. So thank you again.
No worries.
Okay, awesome. Great. Alright, anybody have anything else?
Nope.
Alright, great. We almost used our whole hour. Um, with that, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Boom.
Jens, thank you. Second.
I'll do that. Or, I'm sorry.
So eight fifty-one. Alright, thank you, everybody. Have a great holiday.
Thank you.
You too.
You too.
Forward seeing you guys in January. Stay warm today.
Yeah, thank you.
Bye.